Okay, good evening, everyone. We'll call to order this meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals at 7:15 PM. For this meeting Commissioner Ryan Aronhouse is sitting in for Commissioner Mike Carroll. And Commissioner Judy Cleary was supposed to be here for Commissioner Poyzon, but she has not arrived yet. So, little bit of procedural stuff. In order to successfully grant a variance, a petitioner needs to get four affirmative votes to -- from this board. So, if we're short a member, that basically means that you would need 100 percent. You have to have all members voting in favor. So, what we've always done with this, when we get into a situation like this, is make sure that we leave it up to the petitioners themselves. They have a couple of choices in there. We can carry it over till July, or maybe even sooner if we can schedule, find availability, and get a quorum here in June. So, that's your choice. We can also take whatever testimony you have at this point, and you can request us just not to vote on it tonight, so that, you know, that saves you a little bit of time. At least get it here, and the fifth member can review the tapes, or you can have a chance to come back and just highlight any major points you want when we actually have a full five. Or you can say, if it's something that's time-sensitive for you, like you really need a decision, and it's fairly simple, you can quote-unquote "take your chance," you know, that you convince four members to vote, and, you know. So, we will certainly do whatever you think is best at this point. So, with that in mind, I think I'll call the first petitions, and then just let me know what you want to do. You can pass over it, and we can go to somebody else. Actually, maybe let's just do that, just to get a feel for where we are. Mr. Knott, would you -- would it be your desire to go forward, or how would you like to us to approach it?
Well, Mr. Chairman, in addition to the options that you articulated, there is a fourth option, or third option, which I've used in the past. And that is, I would make my presentation tonight. I would ask the board to vote on it tonight, hoping to get four yes votes, okay? My petition is simple, and it's time-sensitive.
Okay.
So, what I've done in a situation like this in the past, I don't think this is on, is it?
Yeah, it's --
All right. What I've done, like, in a situation like this in the past, I've asked the commission, as a courtesy, if there should be a no vote among the commissioners after my presentation and it's time to vote. If somebody is anticipating voting no, I would ask that that person notify the chair that they are anticipating voting no, in which case, I would ask that the vote not take place tonight, but rather be continued to the next meeting when we have five commissioners.
Okay.
So, if the board is willing to go along with that suggestion, I would like to proceed.
Okay, makes sense to me.
Does everybody, anybody have a problem with what I'm suggesting? Okay.
Okay.
Well, in that case, I'm ready to go.
So, you know, let's get started, and just, and then, as we go through each one of them, since you've made your choice, we can see what each of the other petitioners would want to do when we can come to them, okay? So, just for the record, I'll just call them. 1373 West Broad Street, Petition of Man-Tick Properties LLC, seeking a site plan review and variance of Section 3.4, .4(c) of the overall lot area in order to legalize existing property conditions in a CA zone. Hardship stated is reduction in residential lot area will make abutting commercial property more conforming. And then, 1383 West Broad Street, Petition of Bruce Schatz, seeking a site plan review and variance of Section 3.4, .4(c) of the overall lot area in order to legalize existing property conditions in a CA zone. Hardship reduction in residential lot area will make abutting commercial property more conforming. Proceed, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Barry Knott. I'm a lawyer with the firm of Knott, Knott &amp; Dunn, with offices at 1656 Main Street, Stratford, where I also reside. I'm here this evening on behalf of Bruce Schatz, DVM, veterinary doctor, at the Stratford Animal Hospital at 480 Knowlton Street in Stratford. This time, I'd like to submit the certificates of mailing. The certificates of mailing, and a photograph of the signs that were posted on the front of the property. And I circled and read the two signs, because they're a little bit hard to see. But anyway, I've also handed each of you a folder with exhibits to which I believe making reference during the course of my presentation. Now, this is an application of waiver of lot area for the two houses on West Broad Street, 1373 and 1383, next to the Hudson Paper Company at the corner of Knowlton Street. So, when you go under the railroad viaduct, immediately to your left is the Hudson Paper Company, and that's on West Broad Street, heading up towards Barnum Avenue. And then, next to that, Hudson Paper Company are these two houses. They're single-family residential houses, however, they are zoned commercial. Both of them are zoned commercial. Both of them are owned by my client. Exhibit number one is a photograph of the two houses. 1373 is on the left, 1383 is on the right. Exhibit two is a photo of 1373. Exhibit three is a photo of 1383. Both of these single-family residential houses, as I indicated, both of them are owned by Dr. Schatz, and both of them are commercially zoned. Now, although these applications deal with the two houses that I just referenced, the real reason that we're here has to do with the veterinary office building at 480 Knowlton Street, which is also owned by Dr. Schatz, and this property is also owned CA, which is commercial. And Exhibit four is a copy of a photograph of Dr. Schatz's veterinary hospital on Knowlton Exhibit five is another photograph of the Stratford Animal Hospital. You can see from these photos that there are cars parked in an area to the left of the driveway as you enter the veterinary property. The cars parked to the left are on property belonging to the two houses on West Broad Street. In fact, in Exhibit five, you can actually see the back of the houses on West Broad Street. So, where that white SUV and that looks like a Ford sedan are parked on the left as you enter, where those cars are parked is actually the rear property of the two houses on West Broad Street. Now, Exhibit six is a site plan showing the purpose of these requested variances. I've outlined in black the lots belonging to the two houses with 17 -- excuse me, with 1373 West Broad Street on the top of the site plan, and 1383 on the bottom at the corner. The blue line represents the existing property line. So, right now, those property lines for those two houses go back to where that blue line is. The red line represents the proposed property line, should these variances be granted. As you can see, by moving the property line from the blue line to the red line, it opens up the parking spaces 1 through 6, plus the handicap space along the left side of the parking lot as you enter Dr. Schatz's parking lot. Those six parking spaces, plus the handicap space between space 5 and space 6, are now, would now be legalized with respect to the veterinary clinic, should these variances By the way, the Stratford Animal Hospital has been in existence for more than 25 years, and is one of the busiest in the area. Now, a majority of the veterinary clinics are going corporate, and are being absorbed by large corporations. However, the Stratford Animal Hospital is not one of those veterinary clinics that's going corporate. Because this will remain privately owned, business is increasing exponentially because they provide the personal touch for a person's animal. And, in my experience, animals in the family are members of the family. I mean, who'll do anything for your dog? I will, anyway. So, you know, you want to go to a place that's got, that knows you, that has a personal relationship. My vet knew all my dogs' names. Every time I went in there, some of the dogs had died years earlier. This guy knew how -- I'm sorry about Willie and all this stuff. They remembered the names, you know? It's unbelievable. Anyway, that's me. Now, Dan's comments. Dan sent you comments dated May 28th. In those comments, he points out that the proposed application is somewhat consistent with the property characteristics of the neighborhood. The proposed application does not propose any development, rather only a property line adjustment in order to legalize the existing conditions of the properties located at 1373 West Broad, 1383 West Broad, and 480 Knowlton Street, which are or have been under one Later in his comments, Dan indicates that it appears the proposed lot size would be similar to the residential properties in the abutting RM1 zone, and the board should consider whether proposal will benefit the health and safety of the residents by providing additional onsite parking spaces for the commercial business will assist in the reduction of vehicles parking on this well-traveled road. He's talking about Knowlton Street being the well-traveled road. Knowlton Street is a well-traveled road. Most of the people that I know take Knowlton Street to get to the windmill for hot dogs. Simply put, we are moving the lot line between the two houses on West Broad Street and the commercial building on Knowlton Street. This will allow for a legal conforming lot at the veterinary building, thereby providing adequate parking to keep potential customers of the veterinary hospital from parking on the street. The granting of these variances will also legalize the lot area status of the two houses on West Broad Street. They're non-conforming uses now. These will make them legal non-conforming uses. Most important, there will be no modification to anything that currently exists on these properties. There will be no change in the field to any of the houses on West Broad Street, nor to the veterinary hospital on Knowlton Street. We're not going to do anything on the site. We're moving the property line if you grant this variance, and that's a paper, that's a paper change. We file a map with the town clerk's office, and that's the end of it. Nobody in the neighborhood is going to know that this even happened, nor will they care, because they already think those parking spaces on the left side of the veterinary parking lot are part of the veterinary parking lot. So, we're just making it legal. So, these variances are needed to legalize the three properties. I ask for your favorable consideration, and once again, should one of you decide to vote no, if you would let the chair know, I would appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Questions from members? Ms. Swilley?
I don't, I have a question.
Okay.
That makes perfect sense to me.
Let me ask a couple of questions.
I went there today, and, you know, I could see that the amount of parking that are there. I think, you know, to make it securely their parking places, it would be important.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question, Chris.
No, I'm trying to formulate it, because there's a couple of things I want to make sure I understand. So, the, what is the, if I'm looking at this, is it, how much, how far is that line moving?
It's moving the length of a car, and I'm going to say...
Is it a full car or half a car? Because it looks like it's, like, only, well, okay.
Oh, no, the line is moving.
Yeah.
The length of a full car.
Okay.
All right? And the length of a full car is 18 feet, right, Dan? I think that's right. It used to be 20, now it's 18.
The plan that Barry submitted, in between the blue and the red line, showing 14 feet.
14.
14 feet. Okay. Is, so it's, basically, it's taking, as I look at number five, it's taking the parking space plus a small strip of, I'm assuming, grass?
That's right.
Grass in between.
That's correct.
Okay. Is that grass needed, or why not just bring it to the end of the asphalt and the pavers at the end? Because we have to look at what's the minimum amount to correct the situation, and I'm wondering why we're actually going, like, an extra few feet beyond.
Well, you know, people get out of their cars, the cars break down, you know? You call the towing company, they come, they open up the front of the cars. We need to be able to get around cars that are in the, that are in the parking lot. I don't think it makes any, it's a de minimis issue.
Yeah, okay, no, I was just curious. And now, so, the one person that owns all three lots?
Yep.
How long have they held all three lots?
Well, they bought, Dr. Schatz bought them at three different times.
Okay.
He bought the animal hospital first, and he's, I can't, I really, I don't know, there is a copy of the deed attached to the application.
Yeah, I should have seen that. It's on the file, I'm just grabbing it.
Yes, it's the deed.
Yes.
Do you have this one?
I got it, I just found it, yeah. Uh, let's see the date on it. Okay. Oh, yep, 2004, okay. Yes.
Do you know what the rear minimum setback is for the zone?
Mr. Brand, can you speak to that? I don't know off the top of my head, but...
For, for the houses?
Yes. That we're going from, we're going with 33 foot, 48 foot, 37.
Mr. Knott, I think we found 2018 or 2004, if that sounds about right.
I think it was 2004.
Okay.
Well, yeah. Maybe... The, the minimum required rear setback is 25 feet for the RM1 zone.
The, there is no deed. I do not have a deed for 480 Knowlton Street, because 480 Knowlton Street is not a subject of this variance application. The only two properties that are the subject of this variance application are the two houses on West Broad Street, one of which was, what, 2004, and the other one was 2018.
The reason for the question is, did they start, when they put the parking lot in, at some point, it encroached on those other properties? And what I'm just curious about is, did they own?
Oh, yeah, they owned them. They already owned them.
At that point?
They already owned them, yes, oh, yeah. And the creation of the parking lot happened accidentally, actually, because the land was there. It was the rear yard of the houses on West Broad Street, and people were just pulling onto the lawn where the parking spaces now show, and going into the animal hospital. So, rather than have people continuing to park on the lawn, he paved it.
And do you know when that paving took place?
No, I don't.
Okay. Okay.
So, it's paved, but it's still the property of the single-family homes?
What about it? I'm sorry?
I said, it's paved, but it's still the property attached to the single-family.
That's right, that's right. That's why we're trying to move the property line.
Yeah, yeah.
So, it becomes part of the parking lot.
Yes.
Exactly.
Is, is this board typically the venue for amending a lot?
Line?
Yes.
No.
Okay.
But you're not amending a lot line here. Oh, yeah, for as far as amending a lot line is concerned.
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
But subsequently, a MYLAR is going to be recorded on the, on the town clerk's records, land records, to show that this area of parking is now part of the commercial piece of the hospital. That gets, that simply gets recorded by having Dan sign off on the MYLAR after this, these variances should be approved. That doesn't require any approval, as long as the MYLAR shows a lot line adjustment that conforms to the regulations, which this one will. The zoning enforcement officer or the planning zoning administrator signs off on the map, then we record the MYLAR, then we record it on the land records.
And, and then just to, so, if this goes through, if this is approved, then all three lots will be in conformance? Did I hear that correctly?
No.
No?
What will happen is the veterinary clinic will be in conformance.
Veterinary, it will be in conformance, okay.
As far as the other two houses are concerned, they're non-conforming lots now, because they're undersized. They're, they're going to be 700 feet each undersized, should this variance be approved, but at least they will be legally existing non-conforming lots. There's a difference between a non-conforming lot and a legally existing non-conforming lot. Non-conforming lots are legal, because they existed before the zoning regulations went into effect. So, I'm not saying that a non-conforming lot is not legal.
Yeah.
However, if you have a document that can be recorded on the land records saying that that non-conforming use has been legally created, which is what would be happening here, then it becomes a legally existing non-conforming use. Banks will mortgage it, you can sell it easier, all kinds of stuff.
Okay. It's, you always give me the interesting ones, huh?
Well, you know, you know me, Chris.
Yeah. No, I mean, it almost comes down to a question of, you know, on the self-created hardship thing, is like, when the parking lot was extended onto those other, you know, beyond the property line?
Well, it didn't happen.
Was it his or not?
It didn't happen intentionally. It happened by virtue of the owner of the patients sticking their cars there and running into the building. So, and at some point in time, he decided to clean it up and pave it. And he owned all three properties, he didn't care.
Yeah.
He didn't realize that it was a problem. And it's not really a problem, but technically, it's a problem, and I'm trying to straighten that out tonight.
Yeah, okay, makes sense.
So...
Go ahead, Ms. Swilley.
Was there any communication with the, are the home, the two homes, are they owned or are they rented?
No, the two homes have residential tenants. They're, people are living in those homes as residential properties.
Uh-huh.
They're single-family residential properties rented to the people occupying them by Dr. Schatz. Dr. Schatz is the landlord, people are living there as residents.
So, they have no objection to this?
They have no say. They don't care, anyway.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, Schatz talked to them, and they don't care.
Okay, that's good to know.
Okay, any further questions? Ms. Lynch, Mr. Aronhouse?
Okay, so, they're going to be able to park?
I'm sorry?
Are they still going to be able to park on Mr. Schatz's property?
The people in, the people in the houses?
Yeah, the house.
Oh, yes. We, if you look at the site plan, there is a driveway leading from Knowlton Street into the back of the house at 1873.
Right.
The proposed driveway.
Right.
And then, the house at 1373 has its own driveway.
Oh, so they have it?
Yeah, they got driveways.
Okay. And then, he's going to put, like, private property, right? And build a handicap, and...
Well, those spaces are, they're already there.
Oh, they're already there, okay.
Yeah, they're already, they're already there.
Okay.
That's why I'm trying to get this straightened out.
I see now, okay.
So, where does 1383 park now? They don't have their own?
They got a different driveway now. They got, the driveway now comes, uh, where is it?
I don't even see it on the satellite photo, that's why I'm just trying to figure it out.
They come in now, let me, let me think about it, if I can recall. I, I don't know where they, how they come in now. I, all I can tell you is that they're going to have a driveway coming from Knowlton Street, which is shown on this, that proposed map. I don't remember.
So...
I know there's a driveway now, I don't remember where it came in.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, were they parking in the animal hospital?
Oh, I don't think, I don't think Schatz cares if they want to park there. He doesn't care.
Yeah, okay. I don't see, I don't see a, I don't see a driveway on that, on that lot, which is kind of interesting.
You don't see the driveway on the 18, is it 1383, coming in from the street?
No.
The proposed driveway?
The proposed driveway.
Well, I mean, the proposed, but I'm saying currently.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, currently, I don't see one.
No, I don't know where the other one was.
Yeah. I see it on 1373, but I don't see it on 1383.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, questions from, further questions from members?
So, you're going to build a driveway for the 1383, then?
Yes, that's right.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Do you know if, if that driveway is going to require a variance as well for impervious coverage?
No.
It won't?
No.
Okay. Because I'm just worried about cutting off the work.
Yes.
Okay.
If it ever got to that point, we'd make a gravel, which is what's going to be happening all over town until the zoning, there's certain zoning regulations that have to be changed. Some of the new zoning regulations that went into effect on January 1st are, have technical glitches in them. And Dan and Sussmita are preparing an application to the zoning commission to point out to the zoning commission where these glitches exist in the new zoning regulations, asking that the zoning commission fix the errors. And most of them, I think, most of them, one of them, for instance, is the issue of a patio versus a deck. Under the old zoning regulations, patios counted towards coverage, but, but, excuse me, decks counted towards coverage. Decks counted towards coverage, but patios didn't. So, in a situation where a person was going to go over coverage by building a patio, I tell my clients, excuse me, by building a deck, okay? I tell my clients, instead of a deck, build the patio, because patios don't count towards coverage. If you build a deck, and you're close to coverage, and you're going to be building a deck that's going to push you over coverage, then you got a problem. You're going to have to come here, and you don't really have a hardship. So, as a result of that, they, Dan and Sussmita have picked out certain areas in the new zoning regulations where the new zoning regulations are inconsistent with the old zoning regulations, and shouldn't be. So, that, that's going to be fixed, whereas, so that patios now will not, will not count towards coverage, but decks will. So, that's just one example of the kind of stuff that's going on with the new regulations. Fortunately, we... Fortunately, we got Dan and Sismita at the helm. And they're getting us through the choppy waters of Long Island Sound.
We greatly appreciate them. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, anybody wish to speak in favor of this petition? Does anybody wish to speak in favor of the petition?
Aye.
Anybody? Anybody wish to speak in opposition to the petition? Anyone in opposition? If not, we'll take a motion to close this particular item?
Yes.
By Ms. Lynch, second. Mr. Earnhouse? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Carries unanimously. Anybody else have their agendas in front of them? Somebody want to call petition number two?
Yes.
Ms. Lynch, proceed.
Two fifteen Wilbar Drive, petition of Sarah and Shane Pucci, site plan review and variances of section three point two point one C of the overall building and impervious coverage in order to construct an above-ground swimming pool incidental to a single-family dwelling in a RS dash three zone. Hardship, under size, underseas or undersized, pre-existing, non-conforming lot and recent changes to the zoning regulations.
Okay. Evening, sir. Again, we'll make the same, um, you're aware of the situation as described. We will proceed as you see fit, um, tonight. You can either ask us to, uh, hold off, do the same thing, here, present your case, have us discuss it, and then if somebody feels that they might be going in the negative, we can hold off until we have a fifth member, or you can, um, you know, take your chances on getting four out of four. Okay?
Okay, thank you. Good evening. Um, yeah, as Attorney Knott said, I, I think I'd like to do the option, proceed, and then if there's a, a no vote, then maybe it could get, you know, brought on until another member was able to review it.
Very well, we'll proceed in that, in that manner.
Okay. Uh, good evening, chairsperson and, uh, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. Um, I'm here respectively to request a variance for the maximum building coverage requirement in RS three zone to allow for the installation of a fifteen by twenty-four foot above-ground oval swimming pool on my property. As you're aware, the RS three zone regulations limit building coverage to twenty percent. My property currently sits at twenty-six percent due to a previously approved variance in twenty twenty-one for a garage addition. And this proposal would increase the building coverage to thirty and a half percent. However, impervious coverage would remain the same, unchanged at forty-one point five percent as we plan to remove existing patio block to offset any increase. Our request stems from several unique circumstances. First, we purchased a property and completed previous improvements, swimming, when swimming pools were not counted towards building coverage. A recent reinterpretation of the regulations now include pools in this calculation, creating a retroactive hardship for properties that were previously compliant. Second, our lot, um, as it's slightly undersized at nine thousand nine hundred and fourteen square feet, it does put us at a disadvantage compared to neighboring lots that are held to the same percentage limits. Additionally, being a corner lot, we're subject to two front setbacks further limiting, um, unusable space. Third, this proposal is consistent with the development of pattern of our neighborhood. Many nearby properties have similar improvements, including pools, patios and additions. This project would not stand out or negatively impact the character of the community. We've also worked to ensure that there's no adverse impact to health, safety or welfare. The pool will meet all setback and safety requirements and it won't be a permanent structure. This pool isn't a luxury for us. It's really meant for everyday family use. We have three young children, ages nine, seven and four. And like many parents, we're just trying to give them a safe, fun place to enjoy time outside during the summer. With the lot constraints and the recent changes to how pools are classified, this variance is only reasonable path forward to make it possible. It's a modest improvement that's consistent with the neighborhood and we've made every effort to stay within the limits where, wherever possible. My wife and I appreciate your consideration and your time tonight and we're happy to answer any questions.
Questions from commissioners? Let me just ask, um, go back to the satellite photo. Okay, it appears, so how much of the, um, the block is being removed? And converted to gravel?
Just, just enough to keep it at the current impervious coverage, which is forty-one and a half.
Oh, okay. So it's, it's been calculated to, to, okay, I got, I got you.
Yeah, like, my surveyor, I asked him if he could just, I wanted to remove enough to, so we were in compliance and we weren't asking for any further impervious.
Okay, that's good, that's good. Appears there's a lot of, a lot of swimming pools in your neighborhood too, from what I can see.
Yes.
So it's atypical. I mean, it's not atypical is what I want to say. And how long have you owned the property?
Uh, we've been there since, uh, two thousand and thirteen.
Okay. Okay. Further questions from members? Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Anybody wish to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody wish to speak in favor? Anybody wish to speak in opposition? Anyone in opposition? If not, we'll take a motion to close.
Take the motion?
Mr. Earnhouse, a second? Ms. Sweeley? Okay. All in favor say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, no? Carries unanimously. Thank you. We'll take it up as, as we indicated. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Okay. Somebody else want to grab petition number four?
Sure.
Yep.
Sixty-six Pumpkin Ground Road, petition of Michael and Megan Brelsford, seeking a site plan review and variances of section three point two point one C of the front and side yard setbacks and the overall building coverage in order to construct an attached two-car garage with a second story above incidental to a single-family dwelling in RS three zone. Hardship, pre-existing, non-conforming property where a literal enforcement of such regulations would result in exceptional difficulty or unusual hardship.
Okay. Good evening, uh, folks. I just want to remind you as well, we will, you've heard the options a couple of times that you have available to you. Just let us know how you want us to proceed and we'll do that.
I think we appreciate if anyone anticipates voting no, that you let the chairman know.
Okay, very good. Okay, proceed with your testimony. Thank you.
All right, good evening. Um, thank you for your time and consideration. I am Mike Brelsford and this is my wife, Megan. We are here to ask for a variance at our home sixty-six Pumpkin Ground Road. We dream of attaching a garage where our driveway currently is. The old garage has a crumbling foundation and it makes much more sense to tear it down and attach a garage to the house rather than build a new one in the old one's place. I was raking up chunks of the foundation along with the leaves last fall. It's that kind of, I don't know what you'd call it. It's not poured concrete. It's from the nineteen forties. It's gravelly, kind of, the gravel's coming off, yeah.
Okay.
The backyard requirement of thirty feet as described in zoning regulations three, two, one C required lot, area, dimensions, yard, coverage, height, creates a hardship for our property. Currently, we have a pre-existing, non-conforming property where a literal enforcement of such regulations would result in exceptional difficulty or unusual hardship. There is a question with every, uh, request for a variance of whether or not the project would cover too much area. I would argue that there will still be plenty of open space on our property. I'd like to draw your attention to the staff comments, which literally say that there is a quote, "large unbuiltable" quote, "portion of the property that must remain open space because of the neighbor's sewer that runs under the far corner on the total opposite side from where we want to attach the garage." So I'll, I'll repeat to emphasize, there is a large portion of yard that will remain alone. That has to remain alone. Our two dogs love to run around and play fetch there. There is plenty of space for a swing set or a sandbox or game of kickball should our plan of having a family come to fruition. Uh, I also want to emphasize that we would be demolishing the existing garage, uh, as shown on the map. This means that the new garage will be farther from both the side and back property lines. It also means that we will gain backyard space that will be, uh, greatly beneficial to us. The last thing I will emphasize is that we would be, um, only building on what is currently the asphalt driveway. Really currently just wasted space, uh, the cars pass over when en, when entering or exiting the property. We would be tearing up no green space, losing no plants or trees. This project, we very much feel, you know, as the homeowners, um, who'd be investing in this, we very much feel that this makes sense to do. We do have a unique lot, but this project will contribute to its functionality, not detract from it. Uh, we are friends with our neighbors and have spoken to them all about this in detail and they have all been enthusiastically positive towards us having, uh, this addition and see the benefits of it for the neighborhood as well. So thank you for your time and consideration. Uh, we look hopefully forward to your approval.
Okay, questions from commissioners? That is a very unique shaped lot, I will say that. Called the tricky triangle.
Yeah, thank you for that. The, um, the town had sold the back lot, um, which, which had been the backyard. Or sorry, the town didn't sell it. The, the, the previous owner sold it. Um, I'm not sure how the process was for that, but now there's, that used to be like the backyard and now there's another house that got built behind there. So in that process, it made our lot non-conforming, um, you know, which I wasn't aware of when we bought, you know, I was pretty naive as a first-time homebuyer. We loved the lot. We loved the property. We loved the town. Um, and, you know, we were, it was explained to us that that move made our lot non-conforming, so.
We also have signatures from all the neighbors talking to them about the lots, if it will.
Okay. If you have a copy of that, we'll, uh, be happy to take it as evidence.
So there's, we had to leave a few of them in mailboxes, so there's, you'll see there are some copies.
Okay, no worries. Oh, okay, yeah, please give that to Mr. Earnhouse and we'll- Okay. Okay. Right, so let me just make sure I understand everything here. So the garage, existing garage and the, uh, a portion of the driveway is coming out, being removed. And the, um, I'm going from one car to two-car garage now, which will be attached, correct? It's attached to the structure?
Yes, yes. It kind of, it makes sense for a lot of reasons. I could talk more about that if you want, but-
Sure.
Well, so, you know, it's, um, uh, because we're actually, we are actually, as, as Dan's comments point out, we're reducing our impervious coverage. So we think that it just, you know, it really makes sense to have both cars housed inside since we're able to bring that percentage from forty-nine percent down to forty-three? I think it's forty, it says it in, in Dan's comments in there.
Yeah.
And also it will help to keep the, uh, I'm sorry, it'll help to keep the garbage cans out of view, which I'm sure helps all the neighbors and keep-
Away from animals.
Away from animals with the raccoons getting in and keep the snow blower covered and all that, out of, like undercover.
Yeah. Right now, some of that stuff gets stored outside.
Yeah. Okay. Mr. Earnhouse?
Just a quick question. The, the one-car garage, how far is that from the, from the property line?
About two feet right now. So that would really not only give us backyard space, but it would, you know, it would be pulling away-
Back, like as-
Yeah. Yeah, we've, yeah.
Yeah, that is really right up against it, yeah.
Wedged right in there.
Yeah.
It was built in the nineteen forties. We did not decide that one there.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it looks, it looks like old, so, old school. Any further questions, members? If not, okay, thank you. Anybody wish to speak in favor of the petition? Anyone in favor?
Yes.
Mr. Knott?
Barry Knott, sixteen fifty-six Main Street, Stratford. In my youth, I was responsible for the creation of this lot in the, in the size and shape that it is. When, when they said sixty-six Pumpkin Ground Road, I jumped, my, I was startled because I remember it. The lot that they are working with is very difficult, as you can see. All right, it's very unusual. The lot was created, I forget, I don't know, a long time ago, maybe twenty years ago, when we were doing Cut Spring Road. That whole Cut Spring Road up in the back thing, that's when this happened, okay? So we knew it was a tough lot then, it's still a tough lot. They've done a great job with it. They want to do a better job with it. Why not? Thank you.
Appreciate that. He took responsibility for it. Good. Anybody else wish to speak in favor? Or take responsibility for anything, yeah? Anybody wish to speak in opposition? Anybody in opposition? If not, we'll take a motion to close this petition by Ms. Lynch. Is there a second, Ms. Sweeley? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Carries unanimously. Okay, that's the last of our petitions? Oh, no, we got one more? You're right, we have one more. I'm sorry. Petition number five. Anybody wish, wish to call it?
Petition of James Farm LLC seeking a site plan review and and variances of three point two point one C of the front and side yard setbacks in order to legalize a newly constructed, single-family dwelling in an RS four zone. Hardship, pre-existing, non-conforming lot.
Okay, is petitioner for ninety-three Wyoming Street present? Okay, good evening. It's your name and address and what you'd like to do.
Good evening. My name is Timothy Aspenwall. I am an attorney here in Stratford. Our firm has been here approximately seventy years. I've been born and raised as well. I represent James Farm LLC, which is a Stratford, created LLC as well. I do have, if I may approach the bench, the certificate of mailings as well as the, uh, picture of the side itself. And I will proceed when the chair directs.
You may proceed, sir.
As the, uh, the staff member review wrote, the, uh, petitioner is now seeking a waiver of the front yard setback requirement required of twenty inches to the, to the existing nineteen point three inches, a minor difference of nine inches. The second variance request is for a side yard setback from the required ten to the existing eight point one inch. The area identified on the survey along the northern property line of the Cantive Atlanta bump, out of the indoor fireplace. I would note that that is, that bump is right next door to the house that we've received the letter from, which is the letter of support for this petition. This, this guy has gone above and beyond, uh, what most petitioners done, have done with these developments. He's put over forty-six trees in, numerous shrubs. Has really done a great job to better the community. The neighbors have literally stopped by on numerous occasions, complimenting the house and how it has, it's helped the neighborhood, beautified the neighborhood. Quite frankly, you know, through the, uh, divines, you know, years ago, uh, you know, we're asking for very little on the front, you know, literally a fistful on the side. We were asking for something that goes a little beyond the foundation. Years ago, what I've been told, you know, for instance, the kit levers on the roof were not counted. This is slightly outside the foundation, but not much. The bottom line is, on both, uh, requests, we're asking for very little, very little on the front, very little on the side. And the impact on the side directly affects the next-door neighbor who has a letter of support, which is in, in the file itself. And I, I would- And I would, I'm sorry, I would also like to adopt Attorney Knott's position as well.
Oh, thank you, appreciate that, yeah. When was the, when was the house constructed?
Just this year. The, this, this lot came before this board, I think, a year, year and a half ago, and there was a variance created to create the lot, to create the house. And the board, the offices have had the surveys for quite some time, and where we found the slight variances were with the as-is survey. And again, the front porch literally is my fist, is what we're seeking, and the side, the side is a slight bump, which is outside the foundation, somewhat out the foundation. And she has absolutely no objection, and in fact, she's in favor of it.
Okay. Mr. Aronhouse?
So, I guess I'm just curious how this was built, non-conforming?
That's a great question, and I submitted that to my client this morning, and his answer to me was, you know, I don't know, because they've had these surveys and these plans for eons, and the first person that picked up on it was the surveyor that he sent out to have the as-bill. And I think he was as shocked as anybody.
Yeah, it seems like that's a risky run when you go right up to the setback in a construction, right? That you could have built, they could have built the house smaller to be less than the setback.
I don't disagree. I don't, I think they had no idea that they were in any sort of violation whatsoever because of the fact that the surveys and the building plans were in the office, and no one had made any comment. And again, I reiterate that the neighbor who it does affect the most is in total support of this.
Somebody else had a question? No? I think most of mine were pretty much the same. I mean, it seems though, like, again, being mindful of the prohibition of self-created hardships, you know, but it seems like, you know, somebody just built it, maybe they cut once instead of, and they, before measuring twice, I don't know.
I can tell you, my client was shocked.
Yeah.
And more than upset.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay, I think we're all set, thank you.
Thank you.
Any members wish to, anybody, member of the public wish to speak in favor of the petition? Yes, sir.
Very not sixteen fifty-six Main Street Stratford. I had a situation exactly like this, twenty-five, no, thirty-five years ago, maybe. As you're driving south on Huntington Road, right before you get to the Merritt Parkway overpass, where, you know, Cut Spring Road, no, wait a minute, no. Yeah, Cut Spring Road, driving down Cut Spring Road before you get to the Merritt Parkway, near the intersection of Tavern Rock Road, just on the north side of the Parkway, there's a raised ranch there. And the raised ranch looks beautiful. It's got a beautiful lawn. It's, the Parkway's lawn coming down is beautiful. So, my guy builds the house where he thinks the setback is to the property, a raised ranch. The whole thing is up, twelve feet, fifteen feet into the setback. So, we go and try and get a CO, and we go to, I forget who it was in those days, it could have been Doris McClellan or something, I mean, it was a long time ago. Go to the zoning office, and they say, you can't build, you can't build this house like, right here. He said, well, we already did. It was a mistake. The guy, because of the lawn coming down from the Parkway, the guy thought the line was where it wasn't, and he built a whole house that was, that violated the setback. So, we had to come here and ask for a variance. Now, his was a big error. I mean, he was ten, fifteen feet out of place. But what are you gonna do? Tell the guy he's gotta move his house? You know, what can I tell you? The only person that I know that ever made a mistake was my mother, and she reminded me almost every day that she was perfect, and she never was wrong. So, for every, for the rest of us, we make mistakes, right?
Okay. Anybody else wish to speak in favor? Anybody else want to admit mistakes? Anybody else in opposition? With that, I think we'll take a motion to close. By Ms. Lynch, second Mr. Aronhouse, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Here is unanimously. Okay, now we're actually done with the public hearing items. Yeah. Take a motion to close the public hearing?
Yes.
Ms. Lynch?
Yes.
Second Mr. Aronhouse, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Here is unanimously, and the public hearing is closed at eight twelve PM, so we'll move directly into our agenda. Can't we just take a quick five-minute break? And so, let's just say twelve, just make it eight seventeen, just want, just take a quick five minutes, okay?
Um, that's true, because the Stratford already gave the approval for the setback for the house, so it was a fault, not the, you know, the attorney...
Well, we gave a variance for the...
Yeah, they gave, yes.
But then they, they didn't build within that.
Oh.
But they didn't know when they built, right?
They didn't know.
They didn't know when they built, just...
No one checked.
But it's like, you have a twenty-foot setback.
Yes.
Right.
You can hold your hands up, twenty-one feet back, forty-two feet back, twenty-three feet back, you don't have to build it right on the setback line.
Right.
And you don't have to build it right on the setback lines either.
Oh, that's...
That's just, that's just if the maximum that you can, you can...
Oh, my goodness. So...
Well, do you think people are not unaware that they have to get approval of these things?
Yeah, besides... Yeah, it was more of a... Well, I don't think...
So, this house, the one that we're talking about was just built?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, it was just built.
Yes, he said it was just...
Oh, yeah.
This year.
I missed that.
So, they, last year, they got a deal with the lot size, because it's a smaller lot, it's a non-conforming lot. So, they said, they got approval to the smaller lot, it's like, they pulled a line.
So, who's...
Yeah, so this is a brand-new construction.
But whose fault is it? But whose fault?
It's their fault, because they should have known.
Builders.
In this day and age, I think people... Really?
Okay.
But if they submit it, shouldn't the department tell them? I mean, isn't that why we have departments? I would think so.
I have my notes on each one. Yeah, this one's tricky.
All right, eight seventeen on the mark. How do you like that? Woo-hoo! Okay, we're back on, back in session, so what we'll do is we'll go through the items, and what I'll ask is that we do as usual, make a motion to approve. If it's moved and seconded, we can debate, see where we are, and then, again, as a courtesy that we're making to the applicants, because we're short a person, if a member feels that they would either like more time or want to go for five, then I think a motion to table the item would be appropriate, so we can take it up at our next meeting by agreement from all of the parties that were here, okay? So, let's get started. We'll take numbers one and two together. So, can I take a motion to have thirteen seventy-three and thirteen eighty-three West Broad off the table?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Aronhouse, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Lynch? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, oppose, no. Here is unanimously, they're off the table. Let's now make a motion to approve, please? So we can actually debate it?
I approve.
By Ms. Lynch?
Yes.
Okay, by a second. By Mr. Aronhouse. Okay, it's been moved in, approval's been moved and seconded, so we can begin discussion and debate.
For thirteen eighty-three West Broad, as proposed on your map, you're going to build a driveway for that house, because thirteen seventy-three already has a built-in driveway, so that's promised. Also, it's been twenty-five years, it's a private owner, he already has a wheelchair handicap already set, and the, he owns the two houses, so they will be okay to have cars parked on their side, not on his property. Okay, yeah.
Okay. Further discussion, members? So, I think one of the issues we need to figure out is whether it's a self-made hardship or not. I'm aware that, to the benefit, it appears that this is essentially a paper cleanup and realignment. The net effect of it is that the, we're gonna get one conforming lot as opposed to three non-conforming, so it'll now be one versus two. What's, the prohibition against the self-created hardship is a little hard to figure out, because we don't know... It's unclear, and it's an unusual situation, I will say that, because if this had been somebody, let's say somebody else hypothetically had owned the other two lots, essentially, they're trespassing and building and developing on somebody else's property without seeking permission or seeking an easement in order to encroach upon it. In this case, I can understand why somebody was like, well, I'm not gonna request an easement from myself, I'm naturally granting myself permission to do it, and so, as long as that stayed a three-parcel campus, for lack of a better term, no harm, no foul. But nonetheless, it is encroaching into another, another piece of property, which, even though the ownership is common, at some point, you know, they might decide to divest that property, and then now you have a situation that would still, would at some point have to be rectified by us, one way or the other. Either they would have to remove the parking lot, or they would have to come and ask for a revision of the lines, so that they re, so then it, to bring it into conformance with the regulations. So, like I said, it's a very unique situation, and what I'm grappling with here is, okay, I, it appears that it is self-made, but then it's like, okay, we have this situation, what's the best way to rectify it and solve the problem? And is, and there's an opportunity to solve it without doing anything, essentially, allowing a paper copy to be made. So, that's what I'm trying to grapple with myself, and trying to understand if I'm a yes or a no. But I'd appreciate other members' thoughts on this situation as it's presented.
You know, I think as you've been talking, it's been making me think differently about, because I'm also trying to figure out what is the hardship of the two properties? Because they don't have a hardship. The hardship is the other property that needs the land, parking lot. And I don't know why that can't be, can't be, be done with an easement on the, on the properties, rather than moving the line itself.
Actually, that's an interesting question.
Can't they build fence?
Mr. Flor, actually, let me hold that question. I think one thing, that, one of my questions actually was if we were the proper venue, and it's like, what is actually the best way to fix this situation? And Mr. Aronhouse brought up a point. Is there an easement that can be recorded on here, or is there some other method aside from granting a variance to rectify the situation?
Well, I would kick that over to Dan, because do easements count as part of a lot, lot-coverage equation? That's, don't mean to put you on the spot.
I would have to do more research on it. I don't wanna...
And I'd have to think, I'd have to chew on that myself, too.
Okay.
I mean, I think it depends on the easement itself. As for the property on Pumpkin Ground, there's a utility easement, which I believe that easement in the deed states there is no construction on there. Our regulations don't necessarily omit easements from the square footage of a lot, or an area that can't be built upon. The easement itself would be descriptive of that. Again, I would need some time to look at that.
Ms. Lynch, you had a question?
I have a couple of things. I agree with you, because maybe the two houses park there because the driveway gets snowed, you know, when it's winter. It's easier to park on the Stratford animal side, and he has employees that come and patients bringing their dog. he's, uh, patients bringing their dog, I mean, you know what I mean? So it's easy for them just to park there. And maybe you should have just built a fence. Why couldn't you just build a fence? Say in private property, you'll be told.
Yeah, any, any property owner can essentially do that.
Yeah.
You know, with a fence, is a simple fence permit.
I think, I, I'm not a no, but I'm not. I actually am going to say that I think I need more time to decide this one. I'm, I haven't quite settled it out in my mind yet, and maybe it would be better if we had that fifth commissioner on here. So certainly happy to make, hear any more comments, but I think I'll probably be making a motion to table just so that we can settle this one out, and I think it might be fair that we have the fifth member watch the tapes and have a full five members sitting on this one. Okay. Any further comments, Ms. Sweetley, anything you want to bring up? Okay. All right, so then I'll make a motion to table.
Second.
Second by Mr. Aaron House. No discussion on that, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed no. Okay, carries unanimously, it's tabled. Okay, um, item number two, two fifteen Wilbur Drive, we'll take a motion to take it off the table.
Aye.
By Ms. Lynch, second.
Second.
Mr. Aaron House. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed no, carries unanimously, um, I'll, since there's only four of us, I'll do this one. I'll take, make a motion to approve this one. Somebody else want a second?
Yes.
By Ms. Lynch, okay, discussion.
Um, the petition, Sarah and Shane Poushee, uh, owned a property twenty thirteen. They have children, years nine, seven, four. It's for their family to use. The setback, what they're asking for is a RS three zone. It's a pre-existing non-conformant lot, so it, I agree that they should have it where they're family and put in the gravel as well. They has mentioned that as well. Uh, when building their swimming pool, um, yes, build it, you know, it's going to be located on the corner with the two front setback, it does not appear. There'll be any alternates. So I agree with the pool, swimming pool.
Okay. Thank you. Other members have comments for debate? Okay. I mean, I will say for, for this one, the, the, I think the math speaks for itself and the situation there with the, um, the undersized pre-existing non-conforming lot. I see a, a good faith effort to, to, uh, with the removal of some of the, uh, the impervious coverage to make sure that there's no change in there, so that's good, so that the, it's the minimum amount of, uh, action necessary to relieve the hardship. And I think the, uh, this is the first one that I think we're going to have until that re- wrecked, the resolution of the swimming pool issue by our friends in the other body, uh, make it, make that change. We might be seeing a few of these in there. And just looking at the neighborhood itself, there's a number of houses with swimming pools in there, so it's not a, an unusual situation. Frankly, I don't see any, um, any problem with, um, uh, granting this as a variance, so I'll be voting in the affirmative.
Yeah, the fact that it's an above-ground pool, it's more of a temporary structure than a permanent structure. I'm, I'm more comfortable going to the thirty percent or the thirty point five percent, so.
Excellent point, thank you, yeah. Okay. Any further discussion? Anybody else think that they want to make a motion to table? If not, we would go to a regular roll call vote? Okay, in that case, roll call vote. Mr. Aaron House?
Aye.
And Ms. Sweetley?
Aye.
Ms. Lynch?
Aye.
And the chair votes yes, so the ayes are four, the nays are zero, and the variance is approved. Okay, enjoy your summer. Next one is sixty-six Pumpkin Ground Road. We'll take a motion to take it off the table?
Yes.
By Ms. Lynch, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Aaron House. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed no, carries unanimously. Uh, we'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Mr. Aaron House, one second. Ms. Lynch?
I approve.
Or, Ms. Sweet, Ms. Sweetley, we'll give you that one. You got to rotate around here when there's only four of us. Okay, uh, discussion on sixty-six Pumpkin Ground.
Um, Michael and Megan, um, lovely home, love it. Your hardship, yes, it's a pre-existing property, it is. And, um, you're going to agree to demolish the old garage, as you stated. Also, in regards to a sewer next to the neighbor, there's a large remained sewer, so nothing's going to be blocking the sewer where the water is going to be running in, so there's nothing going to be backed up. It was built in the nineteen forties before I was born, so God bless you on that. And, um, it's, it's a good, it's a good idea for your family to extend this, you know, you, you should have it. The variance and the hardship, I agree.
Okay, further discussion?
On the face of it, I was, I was a little bit worried, but looking at the, the, the removal of the other garage, which is probably more non-conforming than proposing, plus the decrease in the impervious area makes it, makes me comfortable with this one.
Okay.
And I was, um, I went there today and, um, Megan was just kind of describing to me how they would be using this and not really infringing on the setback on the side there. It i- it is a really fairly small piece of property, and it looks like you've really packed a lot in there already. But I think having that extra garage to store equipment is going to definitely add value to your house, plus visually, you know, getting those huge trash cans out of sight. Yeah, I totally like your plan.
Okay, the, um, I think as we, as we stated, just looking at the plans and, um, and, and even when you look at the, uh, the satellite view of it, you can, you can see, this is unique. This is the unique triangular lot. And, um, you know, so I think a, a, a large amount of deference is going to be, is in order on this one. And to that point, though, it seems like, again, as I said in one of the other applications, the, uh, the applicant's making a good faith effort to actually improve things, um, with the, the changes there. As Mr. Aaron House picked up, they're actually moving the, moving that garage back, um, so that it's not right up against the property line. And, um, you know, creating a second, second, uh, a second bay, make it, you know, a two-car garage gives more of a, of a yard in the back, so that actually helps in, in the back. Just for a note on this one, um, oh, and also the, it's clear that the, uh, it's the minimum necessary. They didn't know about it at the time, they actually stated that in their testimony, so that's, that's good to be noted there. So this one is actually, just to make sure everybody knows for the record, this is actually three, three waivers on this particular variance. Just let it's clear here for the record here. Say the, the first is the front yard setback. The second is the side yard setback, and the third is the overall lot coverage, so, and considering the situation that's there, it's obvious that you're essentially reconfiguring the way the property is laid out, and you have no choice, I think, at that point, so it does make sense to me. So, um, I'll be, um, voting in the affirmative on this one. Any further comments? Anybody feel the need to make a different motion? If not, we will go to a roll call vote. Mr. Aaron House?
Aye.
Ms. Sweetley?
Aye.
Ms. Lynch?
Aye.
And the chair votes yes, the ayes are four, the nays are zero, and the variance is granted. Okay. Last one, uh, ninety-three Wyoming Street. Can I take a motion to take it off the table? Ms. Sweetley, is there a second? By Mr. Aaron House. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed no, carries unanimously. I'll take my turn here to make a motion to approve. Is there a second, please?
Aye.
By Ms. Lynch, okay, it's been moved and seconded, we can now discuss and debate. Members have comments? Mr. Aaron House?
I, I, I just have a very hard time with making an approval on a, on something that's new construction, that violates the zoning laws, so. I've had plenty of applications in the historic district where people have done work. It's come before us retroactively where we've made them undo the work that they've done, so I would just say for the record, I, I would, you know, so you may want to table this.
Okay, uh, we'll let everybody make their comments, and then a motion to table would be in order per our agreement with the applicants. So, um, Ms. Lynch or Ms. Sweetley, you can certainly make any comments you'd like. If you'd like.
Well, uh, I didn't really pick up initially that it's a new construction, so I'm glad that our substitute here, you know, explained that. Yep, that makes a big difference because the people just went ahead and it's kind of a huge infringement on the zoning laws. So, I don't know, what if that gets turned down? I don't know what those people will do, but.
We, uh, we have seen some of these before where measurement error creates that, but you're, you're right, if the building, I mean, even to the point where, when I was looking at the, uh, yeah, it's new enough that it's not, doesn't even show up on the, on Google Streets yet, so it's, it's relatively new. You'd think somebody would have done that, uh, done their research on that one. I understand it's, it's relatively small, you know, at least the first part of it, nine inches. But, you know, again, where do you draw the line? You know, so, um, so I think we'll, we'll take your, your note on that, and, um, we'll allow the fifth member to be present and, uh, also give the rest of us a little bit of time to, to mull that over and make a, make a decision, so, okay. Anybody else have any comments before we entertain that motion? Okay, I recognize you, Mr. Aaron House.
Make a motion to table.
Motion to table by Mr. Aaron House, is there a second?
Yes.
By, uh, Ms. Lynch, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed no, carries unanimously, it is now tabled, okay. Very good, very good. Thank you, everybody. Okay, going back to the regular work agenda, approval of the minutes for the May sixth, twenty twenty-five meeting. Can I have a motion to approve?
Approve.
By Ms. Lynch, second. By Ms. Sweetley, any discussion, any changes, modifications? If not, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed no, carries unanimously. Campsite reviews. Good night, Mr. Nutt.
Good night.
Good night.
There are none.
Good night. Have a good night. Any erosion sediment control?
None.
Okay. Uh, any members have any concerns or items that they want to bring for discussion? Okay, I do have one item for item number six, other items. Our next meeting is scheduled to be on, uh, July first, twenty twenty-five. I am going to be out of state that day. Um, I'd be in Rhode Island and, um, it's also Fourth of July week. So, uh, by all means, if I knew we had, uh, four members plus one alternate or some combination to get to five, we could certainly go forward with that. And unfortunately, we're missing Mr., Mr. Carroll and Mr. Boizan, so we'll have to ask them. But I took the liberty of asking, uh, Mr. Brennan if, uh, we would have any, if the council chambers was open on another evening. And, um, he says that it is available on the seventh, tenth, or seventeenth. Let me make sure I get that right. Seven, ten, eleven's a Friday, I don't think we want to do that.
No.
No, seven, ten. So seven is a Monday, ten is a Tuesday, uh, sorry, is a Thursday, and seventeen is a Thursday. So I think what we'll do is, uh, we don't have to make a decision here because we're going to be short people, but, um, you know, if you think that you're going to be available that second week, especially Ms. Sweetley, Ms. Lynch, as regular members, if you think you're going to be available either of those extra days, you know, um, you know, that'd be good to know so that we can schedule that meeting. And essentially what we'll do is we'll cancel our regular meeting and have a special meeting in order to do it. If I found out that you're both available and Mr. Carroll and Mr. Boizan or one of the other ones are available, you know, we might go forward with it, but it's a little up in the air right now, um, just because of the scheduling conflict. I always like to be here, but this is a pre, pre-existing travel plan that I had for a long time, so, yeah, yeah. And it's Fourth of July week, so, you know, people aren't going to be away.
Yeah, and with the, uh, carried over items, it's going to be important that the members that were here tonight are available to attend as well.
Yes.
Are you asking right now?
If you know now, if not, I think you can handle it by email. Either one of them are, you're available for, for all those? Okay. All right, so let's check with, uh, the others, and we'll make, we'll get a decision out to everybody, okay?
Yes.
Yeah, I can send an email out, uh, this week to everybody with, with the dates, and I'll talk to Margaret regarding the time slots that are available as well, so.
Okay, that's good, and we have one, I know we have one petition, let's check with them, obviously, is a change.
We have one. It's, um, it's actually two petitions, but it, they should be heard together.
Okay.
It's a lot, it's a lot split.
Okay.
Mr. Jervin, just.
Yes, sir.
In case you want me here, Monday is much easier for me to come.
Monday is much easier to you? Okay, so you have a preference for Monday the seventh? Okay. Fully noted.
Want me here.
What's that?
Only if you need me here.
And we would prefer, actually, since you heard the testimony on those two. Um, it's, it's appropriate there if, um, yeah, especially if we're going to be short one member, which we typically are. Be that as it may. Okay, any other items anybody wants to bring up? If not, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mr. Aaron House? Second, Ms. Lynch, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed no, carries unanimously, and we are adjourned at eight forty-two PM. I think that's a record for us, so. Good, uh, good job, Power.